I'm now called to order the March 9, 2023, meeting of Mayor and Council. Going to call on Councilman Ben Norton to lead us in prayer. If the gentleman from Troop 491 would like to come to the mic as well, I'll have them lead us in the pledge immediately after the prayer. Please stand.
I shall pray. Father God, we're grateful to you for the opportunity to be together. This is of this city that you bless us with. We're grateful for all the men and women who help make this city run so well. We thank you, Lord, for this mayor and our city council, our attorney. We pray, Lord, that you would give them extra blessings. Be with us in this meeting tonight and make me have clarity of thought and mind in making decisions that are made tonight for by your name. In your name, I pray.
Amen.
Okay, go ahead. Scott, go ahead.
I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Covered this city of Turkey.
Council, you've had time to review the minutes from the February 23, 2023, regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions at this time? Seeing none and hearing none, the minutes are approved by acclamation. We'll move on to item three, the first and only of the public hearing items. Item A, consideration of an ordinance to rezonate 1.76 acres from single-family residential R6 to multifamily residential RM as requested by ISH Holdings. The property is located at 915 West Street. The planning commission reviewed this at their February 27 regular meeting and recommended approval 8-0. Matt Martin, our planning director, will present. Hi, Matt.
Hello, thank you, Mayor. This property is located along the east side of West Street, about halfway between Gordon and I guess that is Main Street. It's on my geography here. Property is currently vacant. Recently had buildings demolished back in October. You see the zoning pattern on the screen. It shows all R6s that were around it. Character area is also pretty unanimous around there. It's established residential, which, as you know, only allows the eligibility of residential zonings. RM is at the top of that list. Area imagery showing the rooftops and development pattern of the area, pretty all residential, except for a couple of the larger buildings, which are churches, and then the convenience store at the corner of West and West Gordon. Subject property pictures. This is how it looks from West Street. You see the foundations of the prior existing buildings. This is the larger piece of the property looking east, where the larger building just sits. The view looking southward down West Street and then more toward the west as you go look down Monroe Street and then looking northward up West Street toward West Gordon. The church that is nearby on the street corner to the south. And then in your packet, you have the survey drawing. Remember, the subject property is the 1.764 acres to be rezoned to multifamily. The applicant also owns that smaller parcel that's shown there, 2.251, that is large enough in our six zoning to accommodate a duplex by itself, and that's what they're proposing there. The proposal for the rest of it is technically called multifamily because of the size and the number of units. Twelve units total, arranged into six duplex-style buildings, but all are one parcel of land with one entrance drive. Site plan in your packet is conceptual, drawn by an architect, but with some engineering considerations in it. You see how the buildings are labeled. Building A is that separate duplex on the other lot that is not part of the subject property, but B through G are the six buildings. And you see they share a driveway with parking area, a turnaround for the fire truck. This is in the local historic district. It's been before at HBC twice, first for the demolition of the existing buildings. That was approved back in October, and the second one was on February 6. And there they received approval for new construction for this site plan that you see, as well as the style of the buildings. Duplexes, mirror images of each other. Each unit is a two-bedroom, 1,088 square feet. With this style that's approved, floor plan is also shown there in your packet, so you can see in scale how it would be furnished or could be furnished and how the rooms compare. Rezoning again is R6 from R6 to RM. Planning commission reviewed this at their February meeting. They found it consistent with the comprehensive plan. It stands for exercise of zoning power, which are there in your packet, and they are recommending approval. The applicant, I believe, is here and can answer questions, and I believe the architect is on his way. I'll be glad to answer any other questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Matt?
I have just one question. Now, I did ask last time about the fire truck going in there, and they had the little drive-off for it when you're making the area. So I was just looking at the fact that when they're zoning it and if will it be big enough for the 911 for the truck to come through there? And you did tell me that they have that drive-off or driveway for the fire truck.
Correct.
Will that be designated so other people will not park or put their vehicles? I mean, I was trying to read to see if they...
Right, probably. And remember, we're not approving a site plan, but that is a fire code requirement. They have a choice, and it will be up to the fire marshals to the final design and any signage that's needed. But yes, just like a fire lane in front of a commercial business, you don't want vehicles there. It's for fire access only, so this is something to be reserved for emergency vehicle use only. How it might get used otherwise when no one's looking is the same issue as people parking in a fire lane. So it's that same kind of thing. It may boil down to how it's designed in terms of how well it would accommodate parking versus a turnaround, you know, for a fire truck vehicle.
Well, I just had it in mind because when we're changing it to multi, you know, to a multi-unit, a multi-housing, whatever, that we do consider that. We got to have that 911 fire truck availability, and that's fine. I just want to...
Correct, and that's part of the review process for any multifamily development. In terms of the site, they also, of course, look at the building designs, fire sprinkler systems, distance to fire hydrant, a whole litany of things that they have to review. All of that is applicable here.
Thank you, Matt.
Any other questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item. At this time, is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Hello, everyone.
Please state your name and address, first.
My name is Julia Dean, and I live, I mean, Julia Robinson, and I live at 941 Lakeside Drive, and I'm in favor of this project. I'm the owner of it, of the land. Do anyone have any questions?
Any questions for her?
Yes, I had a couple. When we looked at the format that Matt just brought out, habitat, we just built, the city just built their home 920, and that first duplex is going to be facing 920, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other, from B through G, would be going south with that cul-de-sac. It'd be like, I'm going to say the name, but I know. It'd be like facing the Pi joint way, right? Am I correct with that? Or will it be facing, it would be facing 921A. It would be facing A building. There would be five duplexes in the middle, and A building would be facing 920, and then the C building would be like side of Monroe Street. So I'm thinking since A and C is facing front, there would be West Street, and the other ones in the middle would be considered Monroe Street. Okay, and my next question was, with you being the owner and people who rent your building, will you have someone that's going to make sure that we don't have any activities going on in that area? That if they not following the guidelines of, let's say there's some activities going on there, and would you be willing to have those peoples to move out to protect the seniors in that area?
That's a good question. I would not be for saying be the responsible person for that. I would get a real estate for that.
Okay.
Yes, have a real estate to have some good rules and boundaries and everything. And we're most likely, they're going to do the credit check, so. Hopefully, we'll get some good tenants in there. We'll get some good revenue because we're going to have it set up where they can have a wash and dryer, but you know, a lot of people don't like to buy a wash and dryer. And maybe back in the day, remember, we used to have that building up there for the laundry mat? Maybe we can generate that back and get some, you know, some revenue up in there on the west side.
Okay, that was my question. Other than that, I've talked to everyone, and we're okay.
Okay, well, I have a request. I've noticed that they're getting ready to build some sidewalks on West Street, but I don't know what side the sidewalks going to be on, so I would really appreciate it if I can get some sidewalks on my side where I'm getting ready to build.
They are going to your side.
Oh, that's exactly what's going to be good.
Yep, they sure are.
And then I have one more. I have one more request. I have a big, huge tree in the yard. That's going to be, they're going to be talked about, too?
We're looking at that, too.
You're looking at that, too? Okay, then, so we're all on the same page, and I really appreciate it, and I am really for this project.
All right for detail, nice going.
All right, thank you.
We supporting you.
Thank you.
I have a question real quick.
Julia.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Well, I just have one quick question. Can we look forward to you duplicating this elsewhere within our city?
Well, I will hope so. I will hope so if this project here goes well. I am looking into advance.
We hope so.
I hope so.
Good for you, good for you.
I got one more, the Pi joint. Could you buy that and do something down there?
No, ma'am, but I can look into it.
Okay, thank you.
I really can, because like I say, I'm thinking about the laundry mat because like a lot of people don't like to buy appliances into apartment that they're not going to be living in for a long, long length of time, and I'll look into that, too.
You moved that one now.
All right, maybe you can help.
You said you were looking at property managers. You got anyone in mind? Because typically, it's the property manager that has most of the control over who's in there and who's not going to be in there. And if there are violations, they're the ones that can determine whether or not you leave.
Right, right, that's true, that's true. But no, I didn't have one in mind. I was going to search around and, you know, get some, get some, what do they call it, some report on them, you know, to see how good this property manager is, see what this property manager does, you know. And I was just going to look around for one. Because just as soon as we get them kicking the dirt, that's going to be my main priority, looking for a good property manager.
Okay.
And your buffer going to be the, you're going to have greenery as your buffer, and you're going to put a fence behind, in front of the buffer or behind the buffer?
Behind the buffer.
And it's going to be the kind you can't see through?
Right, right, it's going to be the wood kind, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Julia, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is there anybody else at this time that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Again, please state your name and address.
I am Louella Tillman. I live at 920 West Street, right across from 921. I don't, I'm not against putting a duplex in front of me, but if it's possible, by me being a senior citizen, will you all consider putting a senior citizen in front of me at 921? Okay?
Well, way out of our control. But I think you were heard.
I think if it's possible, could you place senior citizen at 921 in front of 920?
I think you were heard loud and clear.
Uh huh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the request for rezoning from R6 to RM.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further comment? All in favor, show of hands. Perfect, counsel, thank you. We'll move on to item four, ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Environment, Article 6, Clean Air Ordinance to Include Regulations for Vaping. Chuck Dinkins, our finance director, will present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Chuck.
As we discussed at the work session, this is an amendment of the Clean Air Ordinance of 2003. This simply applies the tobacco rules to vaping. There's been some concern expressed from counsel about the effects of vaping on the health of our population, particularly our younger population. And we had originally hoped that state regulations would come into play. That has not happened, and so this is simply an ordinance to apply the tobacco rules to vaping. So this would make anything that you cannot, anywhere you cannot smoke, you will not be able to vape. So it basically closes a loophole that lets you vape but not smoke. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Chuck? Chuck, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, it's yours.
Mr. Mayor, I make a request. We approve this ordinance asked presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comment? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Move on to item five, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Item A, consideration of a request to purchase 17 self-contained breathing apparatus with cylinders for the Valdosta Fire Department. Our Fire Chief, Brian Boutwell, how you doing?
Good, good evening, Mayor and Council. As we spoke Tuesday, we're coming for you tonight to request permission to proceed with the purchase of 17 self-contained breathing apparatus. This is going to be phase three of our three-phase plan to bring our self-contained breathing apparatus up to National Fire Protection Association standards as we talked about the current economic environment. We have 127,000 left in spots to see if we can afford the purchase of these SCBA's. The quote come back, sole source or state contract, rather, at 141,57643, which gives us an average of $14,576.43. When we purchased our Cascade system that fills these bottles, we actually went under budget by almost $26,000, so that covers the overage here if you approve the purchase. And I also would like to add that we have applied once again through assistance of firefighter grant with some funding assistance to continue the purchase of both the SCBA's and structural firefighting gear. Entertaining, any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Chief? Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this request as presented by Chief Boutwell.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Thank you, counsel. Move on to item B, consideration of a request to approve a contract for professional services for compliance with Phase Three of the Georgia Environmental Protection Division Consent Order. Bradley Ayer, Director of Utilities, to present.
Hey, Bradley. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a consideration request to approve Phase Three of a contract for professional services in support and compliance of our Georgia EPD consent order, which is a renewal of the contract. We've had Phase One and Phase Two. Little history, the city of Valdosta entered into a consent order agreement with the Georgia Environmental Protection Division in August of 2020. The city of Valdosta contracted with Barge Engineering later in 2020 to provide professional engineering services and support in complying with consent order requirements. Previous program supports Phase One and Phase Two were approved by council and successfully completed by the engineering consultant. Among other tasks, this Phase Three agreement will include, Barge will conduct bi-monthly in-person work sessions with the city to review program progress and review with the I and I action plan schedule. Barge will provide assistance to the city for required semi-annual progress reports that are submitted to the Georgia EPD. Barge will provide guidance to the city regarding timing requirements of specific projects to facilitate meeting the overall consent order deadline. Barge will maintain a project tracking log to support the overall consent order rehabilitation deadline. Barge will renew the annual contract with the flow monitoring vendor for the 2023 software and cellular communication contract, and Barge will provide support under this agreement from the date of this contract through approved, those approved through August 11 of 2025, which is the consent order deadline. Staff recommends that we approve this consultant engineering support in the amount of $171,000. Barge is on the city's list of approved engineering consultants and has done an excellent job in assisting the city in the CMON program, and I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Bradley?
This is keeping us in order, in line with our current consent order?
Correct.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions? Bradley, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Move on to item six, local funding and requests. Item A, consideration of a request to participate at the new national opioid settlement. Richard Hardy, our interim city manager, will present.
Thanks, Mayor. As you know, the city of Valdosta is a participant along with many other political subdivisions and public entities in the global litigation regarding the mass manufacture and distribution of this highly addicted opioids. During the course of this litigation, certain defendants have reached settlements. The amount of the settlements proceeds and the uses will be dictated by the state. To participate in the settlement, the city must authorize and execute the participation package. We do not know exactly, Valdosta do not know the settlement amount that we will receive, but we know that if we do not participate, we will receive nothing. Staff recommends that the city participate in the national opioid settlement and execute the participation package.
Counsel, any questions for Richard or for counsel? Hearing done, cheers for action.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda item as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you, unanimous. Move on to item B, consideration of a request for Phase One, master pump station improvements at the Withacoochee Water Treatment Plant. Bradley Ayer, our Director of Utilities, to present again.
Yes, Mayor, this is a request for Phase One of master pump station improvements. The master pump stations, Remer Station and Gonto Station was constructed in 2014, and they pump the majority of the sewage generated in the city of Valdosta to the Withacoochee Water Pollution Control Plant. Since their commission, the master pumping stations exhibited problematic issues that have created ongoing maintenance and repair issues. Some facts and issues, after initial startup of the master pumping stations, the city's utilities, central maintenance staff noticed severe slamming of the check valves, movement in pipe headers, breaker tripping, and pipe joint failures that has led to a sewer spill. Turnip seed engineers was commissioned at that time to prepare an engineering report and study after a sewer spill event, as mentioned, at the Gonto lift station. Turnip seed completed an evaluation of the pumping stations in January of 2023 that revealed numerous shortcomings or defects and recommended significant needed improvements in their findings and final engineering report. $761,000 of this proposal was budgeted for fiscal year '23 and approved by council and are listed as follows. And you can see in your packet there the list of items that were scheduled for in the budget there. The proposal for these Phase One improvements is $799,000, which includes $38,000 in engineering fees for their consultation, coordination, and oversight that was not originally budgeted. The severe slamming at the check valves and movement in pipe headers and breaker tripping and pipe joint failures will continue until these improvements are made and really is necessary. We recommend the approval of $799,000 for these improvements. I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Bradley? Bradley, thank you. Counsel, cheers for action.
May I make a motion to approve the request as stated?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you, it's unanimous. Item C, consideration of a request to approve the purchase and transfer of real estate for the Griffin Avenue Affordable Housing Project. Richard Hardy, our interim city manager, to present.
Thanks again, Mayor. On May 5, 2022, the mayor and council passed resolution to authorize the expenditure of the American Rescue Plan funds for the development for available housing to assist in the provision of approximately 80 units of affordable housing on Griffin Avenue. The city committed approximately $3.3 million of offer funds to assist with acquisition and financing of this Griffin Avenue project. As stated in the resolution, the city will purchase the subject property and then transfer further property to the Valdosta Housing Authority. Even though the resolution noted above has passed, as always, the city has to authorize the following: the purchase of the subject real estate and the subject transfer to the Valdosta Housing Authority. Staff recommends counsel approve and authorize the purchase of the real estate for the Griffin Avenue project.
Counsel, any questions for Richard? Richard, thank you. Counsel, cheers for action.
May I make a motion to approve the authorization to purchase real estate for Griffin Avenue project?
Second.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's all right.
Could I ask that you also put in there the transfer of such as well?
And the transfer as well.
Second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Move on to item D, consideration of a request to approve an additional 5% discount to local builders, builders based in Lounes County or contiguous counties for new construction only. Chuck Dinkins, our finance director, to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed Tuesday, this is an agenda item to provide an additional 5% discount to local builders as defined at Lounes County or contiguous counties for new construction only. The inspections fund tracks the costs and revenues generated by the permitting activities of the city. The current state of the economy has provided that revenues are more than covering expenses, and the city is therefore in a position to provide an additional discount on those services. And so we are requesting that additional 5% discount from now until the end of this fiscal year, that being June 30 of this calendar year, June 30, '23, again for new construction only. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Chuck?
Question on the advertising?
Thomas?
Advertising. How are the people going to know about this?
Well, it would be only for the builders who come in, and they would know about it, they would tell them about it at the desk or when they apply for it online or over the phone. So when they come in to apply for it, it would be computed at that time.
There's no way, other way to have that advertised so people will know that they're getting an additional 5%?
We can certainly put it on the website.
Website, Facebook page?
HBA.
HBA.
Right, well, yes, the HBA is aware, but yes, we can certainly...
Very much. Any other questions for Chuck?
So that way, all the contractors would know about this the way the councilman just said?
Yes, ma'am, anyone who visits our website would know, anyone who comes into the office, well, would obviously know because they would be told at that time. But if they apply online, they would have to go through the website, and we put that right there, so they would know at that time.
We're not asking because a lot of, a lot of things that we approve, a lot of the people don't know what we have approved. Because a lot of people don't go on the website and all of that. That's why, that's why we was asking the question, how are we going to get this out to the contractors other than through Facebook and our website? Is there another way we could do it?
Well, again, we could work through the Home Builders Association, and generally speaking, I think social media and the website are the best tools for something like this.
Thank you.
It could probably be included in that flyer that comes out by email. Right, we can email out, shoot the wireless, put it into that collage that comes out about the events and everything.
Any other questions for Chuck? Chuck, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve this request as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Unanimous. Before we move on to citizens to be heard, I, I'm starting to glance out in the audience and see that we have a few leadership lounge participants that are in attendance tonight. If those leadership lounge participants wouldn't mind standing for us, is it just you, Doyer? Thank you. Now move on to the item seven, citizens to be heard. It's a portion of the meeting that we asked you to come forward and state your name and address, so we may have it for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole and do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It is the council's policy to follow through with you on your concern. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson, again, to respect others' time. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Randy Dean. I live in Adele. I bought the house at eight twelve penny place, got it, I did. And so it is for the purpose of transitional housing, which means people that come out of lamp frequently are not able to stay on their own. When I talked to Yashima Flanders in 2019, she told me they had a forty percent recission rate, which means they go through the program, they go out, they get documented, they get cleaned up, they get help in getting a job, getting a place to stay. The housing cost is too high. They wound up being homeless again and going back through. When I talked to Yashima this last year, she said it's quite a bit higher than forty percent now. So I'm on your side, and I need some land. And the construction model is very similar to Habitat. There was volunteer labor, discounted donated material, but the housing model, though, is weakly transitional housing. The, of the fifteen people that stayed there the last half, I got a CO on July first last year. Of the fifteen people that we gave housing to, contracted with, one stayed for a month at no cost, two stayed for, one of them two months, one of them about six weeks, I guess, at a hundred dollars a week. In my research in 2019, there was a motel on Ashley, the old style where all the doors enter into the parking lot, south of Park, and I think north of Zachadoos, I'm not sure exactly where it's at now, but anyway, the going, his rate in 2019 was a hundred and fifty a week, I think he's at a hundred and seventy-five a week. So for me, the price at a hundred dollars a week, they were getting a real good value. So my purpose is to provide transitional housing, to help people get on their feet, kind of figure out some things and how they're going to work. But, so, I'm about as small as you can get.
Randy, thank you very much. Thank you for what you're doing.
Well, thank you. And please give me, you guys have a lot of land, and you, there's a, as an example, and I know you're not going to do this, but as an example, you've got a fire station on acreage. You could build a fence there and do an acre out parcel for me, and I could build several houses on that, probably. But anyway, there's a lot of small parcels around, and, but last time I dog and pony showed is I've got another.
He's kidding. Randy, thank you.
Randy, where's that fire station at? Where's that fire station at?
I think it's at Gordon and Jerry Jones, maybe somewhere there. I haven't driven by it in the last month. But that wouldn't, that would not be a location you'd choose. I just use that as an example. But there's a lot of parcels around. I mean, if you go to the...
Randy, thank you. We'll, we'll take it up with you after the, the meeting. We'll come down and take it up with you after the meeting. Your time's up. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. You, you want me to say after the meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Please.
Okay, you got it.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Yes.
Again, please state your name and address.
How you doing?
Good, thank you.
My name is Steve Freeman. I just moved here from West Palm Beach, Florida, and I'm loving Valdosta, but I do have a few complaints. Okay, on Northwest Second Avenue, there's an alley there that's First Street. There is no more houses on that property there, on that road there. It's used for drug trafficking at nighttime, and they're throwing trash out onto your right side of the property. The city owns one of those lots there, and they said there was, could be nothing else put there. So what is happening now with the property is it's becoming a trash dump. So when I first moved here, I spent approximately about two thousand dollars out of my own pocket to clean that alley up, which I found out the city owned. So now what's happening now is the alley is, still needs to be cleaned out. So I'm having problems with trying to find out who to get in contact with, helping me figure this out before I spend any more money, because I think the city should be responsible for what I found out to clean those alleys out. And that one road that's on First Street, the church said they will even come in to back me if I need signatures to close that road off back there.
Steve, on that point, please stay after the meeting, and we'll, we'll address that. Did you have another point?
Nope.
Okay.
Thinking, like I said, I don't know which one of the guys is my councilman. I think I talked to him before. How you doing? Good, Lee. Like I said, you'll be hearing a lot of them because I just moved here, and I'm sort of like stuck, so I gotta keep my area like clean, so that's what I'm going to try to keep doing. So excuse me if I come and aggravate you.
No, Steve, thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll get with you as soon as the meeting's over. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
George, Boston Ryan's five zero zero four, Valdosta, Georgia. I'm a little social media guy, and been over, been through twenty cities and others across the state of Georgia, trying to make living conditions better by reporting the news that others ignore. Been complaining for the last nine years about the Georgia State Flag not being displayed in all of members of our armed forces. And that's a problem to me, and it should be a problem to all veterans who have served this country, seeing that we are home to the Air Force Base. But beat up isn't May. I don't know if you all heard about the coroner causing accident on North Valdosta Road and Country Club. I was called from someone that works at the police department. Then I received three other calls, and I was also given an email when the chief of police made her findings about it. I'm not going to get in it, and I do not call this name. But my thing is that I've been saying for years, there's so many things that never reach the newspaper, the TV, and radio stations. And I'm not going to say it's a disgrace, but we who wear that uniform to protect and preserve our rights that's guaranteed by the documents of this country, it is indeed a disgrace, in my opinion. Then I found out a few days ago that on the board of elections website, and I'm sure that all the elected officials already know about it, the reason I don't know is because I guess I've been living the life of an ostrich. I had my head in the hole, buried. But I found out that Valdosta and Lounes County is what they call the capital of the South. Now, if Valdosta is the capital of the, of the South Georgia, is there a capital for West Georgia? And is there a capital for East Georgia? And is there a capital for North Georgia? And with not flying the Georgia State Flag, is there another agenda that some of us don't know about? And the American people had better wake up, because something is happening in this country. And as a retired military veteran, I believe that we need to stand up for the rights that are guaranteed by the Constitution, Declaration of Independence, and the Bill of Rights. If nobody else in Valdosta, welcome the veterans and active duty people respected by flying the state flags in all other states, counties, and cities, even more than me as one that will never take down. Thank you.
George, thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we'll close out that portion of the, the meeting, move on to city manager's report. Richard Hardy, our interim city manager.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. There's a lot, a lot of activities going on in the next coming weeks. This weekend, we have the Azalea After Dark scheduled for May the tenth through the eleventh. The city will host on that Saturday at Unity Park. Come on out from five thirty to eight thirty PM. Food trucks, music, entertainment, so join us for that. The Blueberry, Bluesberry Festival at Unity Park, Friday, April fourteenth, six PM to ten PM, and Saturday, April fifteenth, noon, ten o'clock noon. We also have the Exchange Club is hosting our Officer of the Year, who will be the SRO Devonte Battle this year. He will be recognized on Thursday, March the sixteenth, at noon, doing a very intimate and small program. On March the twenty-fifth, Engineer will host a spring cleaning litter cleanup, location at the intersection of the Two Mile Branch and Berkeley Drive. This will be a collaborative, collaborative effort of litter cleanup hosted jointly by the Walls Group and the City of Valdosta. The event is from eight to eleven AM. This Friday, our neighborhood development and the fire department will have a, have a quiet structure burn. This will take place at ten AM at eleven oh eight Old Lake Park Road. And a quiet structure burn provides a more realistic training opportunity for members of the fire department. This Friday, burn will simulate fire conditions found during a structured fire. Live fire instructors will conduct interior fire attacks with newer members of the organization. Also, next week, the 2023 Leadership Lounge Class will be touring, will be visiting the city of Valdosta on Thursday, March the sixteenth, for Government Day. So please come out and join us for that. That is all.
Richard, thank you.
Mr. Hardy, are you said May thirteenth, or do you mean March thirteenth? Your first one.
Azalea is March, March tenth and eleventh.
All right. Thank you for the...
All right. Close out that portion and move on to council comments. I'll reiterate what Richard said. Our Azalea Festival is upon us. They will be opening it tomorrow night at the Turner Center Art Park. Weather looks like it's going to clear out in time for them to put Two River Station on their stage and officially open the Azalea Festival. The following morning, the VLP LA at eight o'clock over at the, at the Veca, the old SL Mason will be doing their five K. At ten o'clock, all the way till six, fun in Drexel Park, all the, all the free fun that you can handle. And then again, back to our Unity Park that night for some top-flight jazz and a jazz vocalist of some renown as well. And then, of course, the final day back in Drexel Park on Sunday from ten until five, including the car show as well, is all the entertainment. Twenty-three years in the making, that is, that is something to be proud of. Counsel, thank you. Any other council comments?
Mayor, I, don't we have our state flag flying at our public buildings ourselves?
We have it, we do. And displayed in the mayor's office as well.
And the only location it's not flying is, from what I gather, is the Lounes County courthouse, which is underneath the Lounes County...
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So the commissioners need to be addressed, right?
Right.
Because it's one might not clear.
And we're all citizens of Lounes County, so I, I hear them loud and clear, but yes, it's out of our hands to that point. We should probably stand in front of them and say the same, George. Thank you. Andy, thank you. Good point. Any other council comments?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Our senior, in a second. All in favor, show of hands. Thank you, everybody.